And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One preface before we have prayer this morning, a lot of things going on in our country, especially over this past weekend. I think we need to keep families in mind and keep our government in mind and our political scene in mind. So with that, let's go to Lord in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we acknowledge you as the Creator of the universe and the Author of truth. Father, we know that you are present with each and every one of us in each and every situation. That you don't condone evil, you don't create evil, but evil does happen in the world that you have created. Father, we ask that you keep people safe and you be with those this past weekend who were injured and the ones who died. We ask that you be with those families. Father, we ask too that you be with us in this day of taking care of the county's business, that we would be guided by your truth, your will. And Father, we ask that you be with everyone in this room and each person represented online, that they might be protected by you. And Father, we bring all of our prayers to you through your son, Jesus. Amen.
The chair comments this morning involve items on the agenda. First of all, we have Mr. Carlson, who's appearing by Zoom. And I was informed by the administrator this morning that KDOT is going to be present by Zoom or in person on August 5th. And so as to the agreement with the county, with KDOT and the pedestrian tunnel, those are going to be heard on the 5th. And I would like to take Mr. Carlson's matter up on the 5th also. So is Mr. Carlson where he can hear me?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Carlson, we're going to take your matter up on the 5th. And commissioners asked for additional time to consider your submission.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you paying attention.
Jim, are you going to be able to be present on August 5th?
Let me look at, I'm looking at my calendar right now. Yes, I could be available on August 5th for the Fannie County Commission meeting.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much. And also with that, commissioners, I do need to move one item into business items that we received Friday. And that is the county attorney's remodel bid proposal was more than double the architect's estimate. And so we need to take that up during the business items and we'll put that in somewhere. So I need a motion to amend the agenda to include the county attorney's remodel.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do amend the agenda to include the county's remodel and that it be inserted just before we discuss the Fannie County budget in our business items, which is right above Board Governance.
Very good. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moving seconded, that the agenda be amended to provide an opportunity for discussion on the Fannie County Attorney remodel project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll be taking that up at that time. Mr. Carlson, we're done with you for today. We'll see you back on the 5th, sir.
Okay, thanks so much.
I don't have any other comments today. We do have a consent agenda, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, before we move to approve the consent agenda items, I would ask for an amendment to the workshop minutes. That one is to note that I was, I had to excuse myself from that meeting at noon that day and miss the afternoon part. And on the last part where it said everybody voted to adjourn, I was not present for that vote. So with those amendments to the workshop minutes, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This morning, we have an opportunity on our agenda for public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to make public comment to the board? Madam Clerk, did anyone approach you about public comment?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on then and begin our business agenda and start with Western Kansas Career Showcase Board position. Mr. Kreitzer, please announce yourself for the viewing public.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Bob Kreitzer. I'm here on behalf of the Western Kansas Career Showcase Board of Directors. At our last meeting, we reorganized at the end of our first formal year of being a formal organization under the United School Superintendent's Association. Fannie County is our key stone investor. And as we created our Board of Directors formally in our bylaws, we judged it important to offer Fannie County the opportunity to be represented on our board, be it that with a commissioner or someone from staff or someone from the community that's involved in business and/or education or workforce development. This is such a key element in southwest Kansas and we need to continue. And with the stake and the investment that you have invested at this time, we really judge we would like to have you participate. Our board is five people. Currently, we have Boyd Orr serving as our chairman. He's a former state legislator. We have Brandon White from Davis Electric, one of the owners. We have Heather Jance of Max Jance Excavating out of Monizuma and myself. And we've reserved that fifth spot for someone from Fannie County. We formally meet four times a year. They're nice meetings like yours. They start at 8 o'clock in the morning. They are in sublet, but can also be attended by Zoom. And we also encourage our board members to attend any or all of the eight showcases that we have throughout the year. This is so important and it's gaining ground every year and we want to make sure it finds a way to perpetuate itself. And we need input. Those of us who have been on this board for quite a while pretty much operate in one realm and perhaps that third, or excuse me, that fifth person from the outside offering a different perspective could be very, very effective. And obviously, we have several ad hoc board members, Joe Coles, who serves as our director, and Marty Stessman, who serves from USSA, as well as several people from the Southwest Plains Regional Service Center, which is all of the school districts. So we have a lot of input, but we want to make sure we have the right kind of input from the right kind of people. So with that, I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners? The position is on your board, the showcase board, and it is for what length of term? Is it a one-year term?
Period of three years.
Are there any volunteers that want to serve on this board? I'm hearing any.
We get that same answer a lot.
Have you recruited anybody, Bob? Have you looked to talk to anybody other than just us?
Basically, we judge the commitment that you have made. You are our principal investor. And we appreciate that. And we judged that we needed to come here first and give you that opportunity because you had the foresight to jump out. And, you know, maybe there could be someone from your workforce development team that could serve on that because they also know that urgency.
When do you need to know this?
You know, we're going to go ahead and go forward because we have enough of a board that we can go ahead and do business. We would like to have it before we start our first showcase in September so that we could always stand up and be acknowledged and they know that we have some diversity in our membership.
All right, very good. Not hearing any motions. I think we'll table the item for today and get you a decision before September.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam County Attorney, we put your matter on the agenda, but it is right before the, it's at the end of the business agenda. So I just wanted to let you know, you're more than welcome to stay. But you come in right after or before the Fannie County budget?
Right before the Fannie County budget.
Right.
Do you want to handle both matters at the same time?
Yeah, that's, no, we'll take yours up on your bid that's in excess of the architect's estimate. Yeah, we can get your comment then. We've already had public comment, didn't hear any. All right. So next item on the business agenda is the waiver for 3104 West Jones McKenzie. Please announce for the viewing public, please.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, the Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve a waiver request for 3104 West Jones for the construction of a trash enclosure within the road right of way. So this has gone before you, twice before. The owner is requesting a waiver to have one of the trash enclosures, and I believe that was the west or the east trash enclosure. He would like to continue to keep it where that, where it currently is. The other one was proposed to be moved because of issues with Anderson and the intersection of Anderson and Jones. So your alternatives for you this morning are to approve the waiver request and allow for the east trash enclosure to stay within the road right of way or to not approve the waiver request and allow for the east trash enclosure to stay within the road right of way. And not stay within the road right of way.
I'm pretty certain this commission has a handle on it, but if they have any questions, now is the time for Mackenzie.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the waiver, allowing them to keep the east trash container.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded to grant the waiver to keep the east trash container, but move the west?
Yes.
Is that your second, old soldier? Move the west?
Yep.
All right, we're going to go ahead and do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. Are you nay?
I'm a nay. You said same sign.
I didn't. So the motion fails three, two to three. Is there any other corresponding motions from the commission with regard to these items that are on the county's property or right of way? All right, I'll leave it to the county counselor then to work with the homeowner with regard to the encroaching items. Is there any other discussion from the county commission with regard to the trash containers on the subject property? Okay, the waiver is not granted. That's the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
With regard to the next three items on the agenda, we move those to August 5th. We'll now hear from Lana Devol from the economic, Fannie County Economic Development Board in our monthly update.
Good morning. Not a lot of update. We do have several industrial projects that we're working with right now, which is encouraging because we had had a pretty slow period for about six months. We weren't getting a lot of reaction back from industrial clients. It appears that the economy is starting to maybe make them feel a little bit more confident going forward. So right now, we've got, we've got probably four sites out under consideration with industrial projects. So that's, that's good and encouraging. We all want those jobs. Empirical Foods is moving right along. They are hoping to be open yet before the end of the year. The building is beautiful. They are, they are very aware that you guys want to be in that building and get a good look at it before they, they get it full of folks. So they are intending to do that for us. Housing wise, again, we're starting to see a little more interest and a little more motion on that. Interest rate has been tough on multifamily, which is where a lot of our focus had been. So we're hopeful that the rates actually do get cut and we start to see some, some momentum build there. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the president? Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on our business agenda is to hear from Beth Devers, the 25th Judicial District Community Corrections.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'm presenting our revised budget for the 25th Judicial District Community Corrections, and that is our adult corrections program. We were awarded roughly a little over 108,000 more than last year. So that requires a signatory approval from the commission. The biggest change that we made on the revised budget was we had asked for a full-time program provider. That did not get funded and we moved that down to a part-time program provider. And then we were able to offer extra services for our clients, a little over $7,500 for substance abuse treatment and evaluations. And then the workbooks and materials for the part-time program provider.
All right, do you need any signatures or to the revised budget?
Yes, sir, I do.
Questions by commissioners?
Beth, do you see your numbers increasing or going down or staying flat or?
Our numbers are, our numbers are increasing. Part of the original budget was adding a fifth ISO for that just because the numbers are roughly 60 to 70 clients per ISO right now.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 Adult Comprehensive Plan Grants Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Commissioner Larry Jones to approve the 2025 Adult Comprehensive Plan and authorize the chair to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I would comment, good job of getting the additional award. Appreciate it. Right. Next, we'll take up the fairgrounds, the electrician contract. Hear from our fairgrounds administrator, Stephanie Seibert.
Good morning, Stephanie Seibert, Fannie County Fairgrounds Coordinator. I am here today requesting formal action by the board to approve contracting with a sole company for all electric needs for events at the fairgrounds during 2025. Currently, the fairgrounds provides a list of certified electricians to event holders for those who require 50 amp power during the events. This need pertains to events that have a large band or DJ, video boards, and use of Oscar electric distribution boxes. The event holder is required to provide a copy of their contract with the company or the individual to the fairgrounds prior to their event taking place. Through this process, the fairgrounds has had multiple issues with this protocol such as incorrect direct wiring, abuse of electric panels and Oscar boxes, and safety issues that come along with the misuse of all electrical related materials. Therefore, we are changing the protocol, keeping the safety of guests and event holders at the forefront and prolonging the life of all electric materials while subsequently lowering the need for repairs after events, currently at the county's expense. Upon approving the new policies and fees for 2025, the new policy was put in place that all events will utilize the company the fairgrounds contracts with for the above listed electrical needs for their events. Under this process, the charge of the electrical service will be charged back to the event holder. We send out invitations to bid to all companies on our list, along with posting an ad in the Telegram and county website. We've received two bids for this service, one from Cruz Electric and the other from 3G Electric. The alternatives before you are to accept the bid from 3G Electric and work with the county counselor on an agreement. Second alternative is to accept the bid from Cruz Electric and work with the counselor on agreement or reject both bids and go back out to bid. Our recommendation is accepting the proposal from 3G Electric and charge event holders based off the amount in their proposal sheet. At this time, we feel 3G can better accommodate the needs of the event with the number of staff they have versus Cruz Electric being owned and operated by one person.
Questions for the fairgrounds administrator?
How long is the contract to last?
For one year. If both parties do agree, we will do a second year.
When it's time, I'll offer a motion.
Stephanie, I went through the numbers and Cruz is considerably cheaper, quite a bit cheaper.
He is. Our concern is if something were to happen to him, we have entered into a contract with a company and with somebody that may be out for an injury with electric related or family issues. It's one person that does the work and owns the copy, company. So we are thinking about the needs of our guests on that side of things.
In his presentation, he had a couple of electricians speaking in his behalf or it would appear that they are his backup as well.
How do we guarantee that is our side of that? How do we guarantee they would be there if something were to happen to him?
I'm looking at the cost of materials and it's quite a bit of difference. Just speaking from a budgetary standpoint.
But Stephanie, if I understand this correctly, the cost, whatever electrical services we need is going to be paid by those who caused the damage to the premises.
Right.
And so your staff's recommendation, if I may summarize, is that we're going with, your recommendation is with 3G because of the ability to provide services on a more likely basis.
Right. And with multiple facilities, having different events, we may need multiple electricians at one time to service different events. We put the floor receptacles in the exhibition building, which would hopefully limit the amount of electrical needs from events in the exhibition building. So that would help limit that cost. Currently, they do have to have Oscar boxes to have that additional power.
Does our current agreement with vendors who want to use our facilities have this electrical cost provision in it?
We don't have an agreement with electric companies right now.
No, I mean with the people who use it and cause any damage, is it clear to them in our agreement that they're paying for this cost?
Our new policies that were approved does.
Mr. Chairman, Stephanie, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, everybody in this room, everybody watching, this is not creating a budget impact to the county.
Correct.
This is simply the cost of services that will be then paid by the vendors.
Correct.
That's what I want to make clear to everyone. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Then a motion, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion that the 3G electric proposal be accepted.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the 3G proposal be accepted by the county and incorporated into the use of county property at the fairgrounds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
All right, we will next hear on our community development block grant semi annual report from the clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners. So on a semi annual basis, Great Plains Development provides a program income report based on the revolving fund loans that they administer. The report is to be reviewed by the commission and signed by the commission chair. It then gets submitted back to Great Plains Development, who subsequently submits that to the Department of Commerce. So your alternatives on this are to approve the semi annual community development block grant report Block Grant Report for the period ending June 30th, 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign, or decline to approve that request, and let us know what you might need in the way of corrections or additional information.
Any questions for the Clerk with regard to the report as submitted in our package? All right. Commissioners, we need a motion to approve the semiannual report and authorize the Chair to sign.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the report as submitted and authorize the Chair to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll sign it.
Thank you.
I don't go very far.
I'm waiting.
Next on our business agenda is the destruction of ballots. Madam Clerk and Chief Election Officer.
All right. The Board is asked to consider the designation of two electors to be present during the destruction of ballots from the following elections, which would be the 2022 primary election, which is a national state election, and the 2023 general election, which was a city-school election. For a state-national election, those are kept for 22 months. And for a general election, those are kept for six months, and then they must be destroyed. So the last time we did this, Finney County Commission Chair at the time, Lon Pishney, secured nominations for electors from chairs of the two leading political parties. Basically, what we need today is the designation of two electors, one from the Republican Party, one from the Democratic Party. And they will be asked to be present during the destruction of ballots from those two elections. This is required by statute, and it is required that the Board designate those observers.
Does anybody have anybody in mind for these two positions? And do you have anybody in mind?
I don't. I would leave that up to you guys.
Do you have anybody in mind?
Would the previous ones want to do, be willing to do it again? That's...
That'd be my preference if they're willing.
And who are the, what's the name of those persons?
So the last time the Democratic elector was Carol Guyer, the Republican elector was Sherri Nelson. And we would be happy to reach out to them and secure their, their participation, if that's your desire.
Is there a statutory requirement that they for sure be electors, qualified electors? Do we need to make sure they're qualified electors presently?
Yes, yes. And we would do that. We would, you know, check to ensure that they're still of the correct party.
Well, subject to the Clerk's determination that they are qualified electors for each of the respective two major parties, is there a motion to appoint Carol Guyer and Sherri Nelson as the two electors to be present during the required destruction of ballots?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, subject to review by the Chief Election Officer, our county clerk, that Carol Guyer and Sherri Nelson remain electors with the designated parties. Is there any further discussion? They will be observing the destruction of ballots as requested by the Clerk and the Chief Election Officer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on our business agenda is the Eastside Sewer District Number One Discussion.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Jenny Hamel, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. And before you this morning, we have, want to have discussion about raising the user fees for Eastside Sewer District Number One. We reviewed those during the budgeting process and determined that those fees have not been changed since 2001. Our fee actually will decrease a little bit, this county's portion, but the city's portion for the sewage treatment has increased significant over the last 23 years. So we are looking at restructuring these fees. And in order to maintain the current mill levy, we are requesting that you take it under consideration to, to change those user fees. We do not have that currently before you because it will take a rewrite of the resolution, and we did not have time to get that done quickly. But before you, we would just like to, it will increase the user fee overall. The county's portion will go down because the debt has been paid off. And it will restructure those a little bit. But we would like to make sure that it's okay with you to move forward with restructuring those user fees and keep the, before we present the, the budget, that we would like for you to review.
You're asking for a specific amount.
We do have an amount in mind. The current user fees are 1210 for unoccupied residential and 2410 for unoccupied commercial. So we determined that that was the base fee for those without the, the city sewage treatment portion of it. We will change those to 11 and 1650 respectively for unoccupied. But with the addition of the increased city fees, the occupied residential will go from 2705 to 3250. The unoccupied will go from 1210 to 11 dollars per month. Commercial, occupied commercial will go from 3905 to 51 monthly, and unoccupied commercial will go from 2410 to 1650. So there is some, some increasing and some decreasing.
All right.
Over a 23-year period, it's less than a 1% per year annualized increase for those occupied lots. And this would allow us going forward to only levy for anticipated and expected repairs and maintenance. And if that was not utilized, you would have the option to move that into a reserve fund for future use.
You brought up, do we need the resolution before we can...
We do. I just need to know that you are wanting to move forward in that direction, or if you're wanting to, if you don't move forward in that direction, we'll have to look at increasing, it will have to exceeding the revenue-neutral rate on Sewer District Number One.
Well, if you're a user of the district and, and the client that is processing the sewage increases the fees, I don't, I don't see where the rest of the county would have, should be paying for there.
We just wanted to confirm that that was the direction you wanted to go with this.
My thoughts. I agree.
Consensus of the Board is do that, right?
Well, I think that we, why don't we go ahead and have a formal motion to direct staff to bring increased user fees for resolution before the Board?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded for, to direct staff to bring increased user fees, resolution before the Board, and to keep the mill levy stable under our pesky revenue-neutral rate statute. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Get us a new fee resolution.
We hope to have that to you in August.
Very good. Okay, you don't have to go very far.
I'll be here for a minute.
All right. For everybody in the crowd, we are dealing with the tax entities that we have control over, which is Sewer District Number One, Number Two, and Number Three. By statute, including the county's budget, you have to give notice to the Clerk of whether, what are not to exceed rate and whether we're going to exceed net revenue-neutral. Just for the record, this probably qualifies as Chair comment. Start the clock on me, Duane.
Okay.
I have asked repeatedly of our elected officials in Topeka to repeal this net revenue statute. This is foolish. It's time-consuming. It doesn't make government more efficient. And it is legal gymnastics at the local level. And as Adam Smith said, who is the Chairman of the House Tax Committee, who's the first person I know that got a tax bill through the House, 119 to nothing. The state doesn't comply with net revenue-neutral. Why do county and local governments have to do it? Having been said, now let's have our discussion on the required notice that we need to send to the Clerk for net revenue-neutral for Sewer District Number One. Jenny?
Okay. The Board is asked to consider the 2025 budget for Eastside Sewer District Number One as presented. It was created, keeping in mind the user fees that we discussed previously. The additional ad valorem tax of approximately 21,000 is needed to support this budget. Without that increase, just for anticipated repair and maintenance expenditures, and again, that would be moved to your, your reserve fund if it was not used during the year. Your options are to not exceed the revenue-neutral rate and set the hearing date for August 19th, 2024 at 8:35 or an alternate time, or exceed the revenue-neutral rate and set a hearing date for September 3rd at 8:35 or an alternate time.
I've already made clear my, this date through this whole process. And so, Commissioners, we need to give notice of what our net revenue rate is and provide for a hearing as required by this pesky statute.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. And this is Jenny or Dory, but it's my understanding that the deadline for us to have these hearings is September 20th. So either of these dates as well within that timeframe?
No. If you do not exceed revenue-neutral rate, your deadline is earlier. It is August 20th.
Oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Okay, okay.
Twenty-fifth, sorry.
Doing the right, doing the right thing in their eyes.
August 25th.
They moved the date up. That makes a lot of sense.
Remember, their eyes are nobody sitting in this room.
Yeah. Yeah, I, well, that's why I was wondering why the recommendation was for the August date versus the September.
Right, yeah.
I hear what you're saying now. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I would move that we set the August 19th date at 8:30 a.m. for the hearing to not exceed revenue-neutral rate for Sewer District Number One.
It's a clear motion?
Second.
And it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Do you want that at 8:30 or 8:35?
Eight thirty-five.
Did I say 8:30? I meant 8:35.
Okay.
Yep, sorry about that.
Is that all right with the second?
Yes.
Misspoke. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. I hate that statute.
How's he feel about that statute, Larry?
But it only took him 35 seconds in his presentation, though.
Right. Did they, was that...
We'll get your chance there in a minute.
Waiting that out.
You'll get your chance.
Dory, was that, was that stated correctly, that that's for the budget hearing, not the revenue-neutral hearing? Because there is no revenue-neutral hearing.
I said, yeah, I said the hearing to not exceed. So that would be the budget hearing, in my opinion. But if it needs to be worded differently, that's perfectly...
Because it's, because the mill levy is under the revenue-neutral rate, this will actually be the budget hearing for that sewer district.
All right. So, is your motion satisfactory to you?
Certainly can be worded that way in the motion.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, that it is a budget hearing, not a net revenue-neutral hearing. And, and it may change the Chairman's vote as we're not going through the revenue-neutral process.
Motion carries. That's democracy at work. I've been overruled before.
Appropriate explanation.
I'm being asked to indicate to the Clerk that Sewer District Number One is not going to exceed the net revenue-neutral, correct?
Correct.
I'm signing.
Order one, you had to sign.
Should have marked it with an X then. Jenny, you're not going anywhere. Sewer District Number Two, fire away.
The same thing here. We're requesting that you consider the, the budget as proposed. It will not exceed revenue-neutral and set hearing date for August 19th, 2024 at 8:40 a.m. or alternate time. Or if you would like to change the budget and exceed the revenue-neutral rate, set the budget hearing and revenue-neutral rate hearing for September 3rd at 8:40 or alternate time.
Mr. Chairman, now that I'm understanding what Jenny is saying and what Robert is saying, we'll word this just a little more clearly. And, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we set the budget hearing date of August 19th at 8:40 a.m. for Sewer District Number Two, meaning that we do not, excuse me, we are not exceeding revenue-neutral rate.
And authorize the Chair to sign.
Go ahead. No. Yes, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we have the budget hearing at 8:40. The date determines the motion and authorize the Chair to sign the notice to the Clerk of Sewer District Number Two not exceeding the net revenue-neutral rate. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Still don't like the statute. Don't go anywhere, Jenny. Imagine the Clerk has something I need to sign. Sewer District Number Three, please proceed.
The Board is asked to consider the 2025 budget as presented for Sewer District Number Three. We did review and increase Sewer District rate, user fees last year on this one. So this is, again, anticipated that this, what we are levying would only be necessary for unanticipated repairs and maintenance. Otherwise, you may have the option to move those excess funds at the end of the year to reserve funds. Alternates are not to exceed revenue-neutral and set the budget hearing date for August 19th at 8:45 or an alternate time, or to change this budget and exceed the revenue-neutral rate and set the hearing date for September 3rd at 8:45 or alternate time.
Commissioner Pashny?
You're on a roll.
I do have one question to our Administrator. If I'm not mistaken, this is the district that I'm in.
It is, yes.
I don't get these one, two, and threes mixed up. But my question is this, since we're, when, since we had a problem with a connection into our sewer system, does the Sewer District have to pay the cost of those kinds of problems that we had recently in Sewer District Three that came from outside of our sewer district? Or how did, how did, does that have anything to do with the costs in this budget?
Not in this budget here, no. The issue that we had with some infiltration from that development to the north that caused some clogging on that, in that pump station, the furthest north pump station, that's been rectified. And I have Larry and Ray crafting a summary of that event.
But it does not affect what we're doing here budget-wise?
It does, no.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we set the budget hearing date for 8:45 August 19th, not to exceed revenue-neutral intent. Notice signed by you and, and provided to the Clerk.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded on Sewer District Number Three. We have a budget hearing, approve the budget at that time, and I to sign the indication of net revenue-neutral rate intent to the Clerk. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. I think this is where we put the county attorney in. And I don't know if everybody got the information. Madam County Attorney, if you could come forward, please, and you have a two-part discussion. First, you want to talk about budget and also then your destruction project. Correct?
Yes.
Right. Fire away.
I'm Susan Richmeyer, Finney County Attorney. I kind of wanted to talk to you guys about the... I kind of wanted to talk to you guys about the budget, really not just for myself, but for the entire, all of your department heads, and I appreciate the opportunity of being able to do so. A couple of weeks ago, you all met with each of us, and for the first time in the 12 years I've been county attorney, we were tasked with presenting the Board of County Commissioners with a five-year plan for our offices and our departments, depending on whether we're elected or we are appointed. Many of us held out hope at that time that we would finally be heard and some of our needs would be met. Many of us did hours of research and presented each of you with detailed plans, only to have hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, cut from our budgets without so much as a here is what we can do, or what can you do, process. It is important for the community to be aware of the constraints the commission has hamstrung each of our departments with regarding the provision of services to our citizens. The annual mantra of cut the mills, taxpayer doesn't want the taxes, is now affecting every one of us in another way. As a taxpayer, I don't want my taxes to go up either. Inflation is killing all of us, our daily expenses are increasing. However, as your Finney County Attorney and the chief law enforcement officer in this county, I feel compelled to tell those we serve the reality of not funding those budget requests that are made, the real consequences our citizens will begin to see or experience if they haven't already. They need to know what is being cut, and they need to know the long-term outcomes for failure of the commission to see what the future will bring without adequate provision of those services. Some of our citizens have already been victims. Some have felt those consequences of not being proactive and always being a reactive state. That's how our commission has functioned the entire time I've been in office. As a commission, you have a duty to not only obtain our budget requests, but to hear and to trust us and your department heads to know and recommend the actions for their departments that are appropriate for all the citizens within our county, to trust us and respect our ability and our areas of expertise to make solid budget recommendations for the betterment of all of our citizens. When random dollars are whacked from our budget request to meet a predetermined number to cut mills, it does not show respect or trust in our collective ability. You asked for our vision, you asked for a five-year plan, and we all did just that. We all brought you what you asked for, to only be told once again, our hard work and fourth art weren't worthy of any give on the commission's part. As a collective, you continue to follow an outdated and blind perspective to the needs of your community. With that lack of vision, ultimately, every road, every building, and every department in this county will end up skeletonized and in disrepair, just like your jail and LEC. That end result is going to cost all of us millions of dollars. It's very frustrating, because what you save today isn't going to save us in the future. Every one of you know what that LEC is going to cost. And the second part of my presentation today is just a small example of what that's going to look like. There are tough choices to be made every budget cycle, and my office is not immune to those tough choices. We make them every single day. And we're willing to make those choices, but those decisions should be made in a collaborative way. When you cut money from an elect official's budget request, it should not be done blindly. The commission should know exactly what the end result of that dollar amount cut is for every single department that you're cutting it from. To just cut 100,000, 500,000, 800,000 from somebody's budget, not just mine, it's others in this, in this county as well. You come up with things like the following. By not funding those extra positions for EMS, they can't run ambulances that will fulfill all the needs of the county every single day. You've been told that at least once per day, there's a situation where if an ambulance were called, there's no one to answer that call. The same thing happens with the Sheriff's Department. If they were fully staffed, they'd have four per shift running deputies, for, for the second-largest county in the state. That's assuming no one's on vacation, no one's sick, and that team is fully staffed. Now, you imagine if there's an accident at the Kearney County line, and there's one at the Scott County line, there is no one to answer the next call. It's not a matter of when, or if, it's a matter of when it's going to happen. We are already seeing additional drugs, death, and an increasing number of batteries occurring in our jail. What will the cost be when someone decides to sue the county for those injuries or the death to that family member? Will that be worth the 500,000 they asked for in repairs? That's up to you. In our field, we call that what we're doing every day, those tough choices triage, the most important or deadly items take priority. My office, by not having the tools needed to hire attorneys, means there's no prosecutions that occur within this county, and we're then triaging the worst of the worst. For the year 2023, in the state of Kansas, only 88 licensed practicing attorneys remain here, brand-new ones, 88. And I'm supposed to compete with that with counties that have way more to offer than Finney County does. It's very difficult to recruit, and by the way, that is something each one of you made a priority. You told all of us that recruitment and retention was a top priority. And part of what was said earlier today is possibly not funding the showcase, which then helps develop a workforce of a different kind than what I need. If we don't start developing and continuing to recruit and retain people here, you will be in worse shape than we are today. We're already understaffed, we're already unable to handle all the caseload that comes in our office, and that doesn't take into account the increased workloads that come with having body cameras and additional reporting and working with multiple agencies, because the cases we have are, have now increased in size and complication due to data. Data alone creates a huge problem for all of us. I've offered to have you come over and take a look at it, and I haven't seen one of you come look at one of our files to know how many hours it takes to work, how we work. In conclusion, I want to be clear, not one of us sent you a budget we expected to be fully funded. Not one of us did. What we did expect is that we would have an honest conversation, that we would be able to tell you what we can live with and what we cannot, not live with, and have you give Every year, we expected to live with your arbitrary cuts. We don't get to make those or help make those cuts. The LEC and jail situation is just the beginning of how much this community will all pay. You should each ask yourself if you're willing to continually compromise public safety and the condition of all of our buildings by continuing to put off today what is an inevitable expense tomorrow.
Thank you for your comments. Now, can you turn to your remodel?
Yes.
Project. The concern I have is that the funds we had available were somewhere around 600 to 650,000.
Correct.
The bid is a million, two, five. Is that, am I got the numbers?
That's about right.
What do you want to do with regard to this project? Do you want to try to scale it back, get the architect to scale it back to see if we, and then send it back out for bid? What's your recommendation on this building?
My recommendation at this time would be to scale it back and rebid it, see if we can get it into that cost range that we had provided. I may have some additional funding out of my current budget to make up for some of the difference, but I don't have that much. So, what we're really in desperate need of is a training room and an area for which our entire staff can have meetings, instead of having to break everything up into multiple, multiple different meetings and trainings for everyone. So, my, my recommendation would be to bid out the basement and a couple of things, improvements on the upstairs, and see if we can get it down to our allotted amount.
If I can interject an idea, what's it going to take from your architect to scale it back? What's the timeframe to do that?
I don't think it would take very much. We actually started out by doing a phase program, and so we had it in phases one, two, and three. So, she, I think, if she just took phase one and then sent that out to bid, it would probably take her less than 10 days, probably less than a week.
Mr. Administrator, do we need to reject the bid that was submitted? Then direct that the project be redrawn and resubmitted for bid? Is that the right procedure?
That is correct.
Is that what you want to do?
That's what we want to do.
All right. Is there a motion to reject the bid on the Finney County Attorney's Office remodel project and to scale back the project, get it redrawn and rebid?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reject the bid and let the county attorney and the architect get together and redraw a plan that they think will meet budget.
And authorize, go ahead and send it out for bid.
Send it out for bid.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Any input from the county attorney?
No, I think that, that gets us where we need to go, just when it comes in that much higher.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Susan, are you letting the bidder, Dick Construction, know the commission's rejection of the bid and what you're doing?
I let the architect know last week that I seriously doubted the commission would approve that.
All right, would you circle back?
So, she's aware.
And let's get this moving.
Yep, she's aware.
All right, you're good. Thank you for your comments. Last thing on our business agenda this morning is the discussion with regard to the 2025 Finney County budget and the determination of net revenue neutral intent and hearing You have the floor. On budget issues, I don't, I see that we want to set a potential rate that's higher than where we may be. That's the discussion that we've had thus far.
Well, as, as you have read it from the previous work session, the, the mill levy is now down at 46.866, which is below your revenue neutral rate.
Okay, and if we keep the mill levy the same as last year, it would be above the net revenue neutral rate.
That is correct. That's correct.
And that rate was 47.03.
Point three.
Point, 47.3?
Correct.
All right. And it'd be pretty easy budget-wise to put the additional funds back into additional miles or funding the general fund?
That is, that's the commission's discussion, and you do have a lot of department heads here today. I've asked them to be here just in case you wanted to ask them questions, or if you allowed them to express any comments or provide any comments for the budget.
All right. The decision today, though, is what is the not-to-exceed rate, which gives us then the maximum budget authority that we're going to use going forward in 2025.
Correct.
All right. Let's open it up for discussion then amongst the commissioners, and the chair gets the fun part of saying that I do not have any desire to raise the mill levy rate above last year's rate of 47.3. That would still exceed the net revenue neutral rate and provide some flexibility to put additional funds back into the proposed budget. My position is, is that we set the not-to-exceed rate at 47.3, the same as last year.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission and with fun with my fellow commissioner, Duane Dries, you may or may not want to put me on the clock, because it might blow up today. So, I would like to have, be granted some time to make a statement.
Which, please.
About our budget and our budget process, and then we can move forward if you, if you're inclined. To preface my comments, just to remind our commissioners, future commissioners, and people in the room and people online, we have six mandated services by the state of Kansas as county government, public health services, emergency management, solid waste planning, law enforcement in jails, transportation, roads, which includes roads and bridges, and noxious weed eradication. With that preface, permit me to make one thing perfectly clear. I do not desire to unnecessarily or excessively burden local property owners with taxes that fund more wants than needs. With that being said, I must express my concerns about the plan for the 25 budget. First of all, I acknowledge I missed the afternoon portion of our most recent budget work session due to a family commitment, during which time my fellow commissioners recommended some, in my opinion, drastic reductions regarding two mandated county services, public works and EMS. As a reminder to us current commissioners and to those seeking the office of county commissioner, this job comes with a great responsibility. As county commissioners, we are entrusted with many responsibilities, including but not limited to public safety, public health, sound transportation, infrastructure, as well as maintain buildings and facilities. Today, we are here in an attempt to establish a final mill levy to either publish for notice of public hearing on the budget, or to establish a mill levy in excess of the revenue neutral rate, which must be submitted to the county clerk today. No matter where we end up, we need to ask ourselves, are we providing the necessary resources to meet these responsibilities? Have we provided the county workforce with the resources to be successful? Are we providing a competitive wage to help attract qualified personnel for emergency services? Have we provided the resources to properly maintain our roads and facilities, both of which are in dire need of attention? This year, we heard a need of, heard a need for funding of roads. Our current practice of hoping to transfer from year-end into the special highway fund enough money to do a project is allowing us to do a project every three or four years. This year, it is 12 miles. Staff presented us a plan suggesting a 10- to 12-year maintenance plan, and the commission was presented with a budget, and this was the 49-mill budget, to fund five miles of road in an attempt to keep the budget at a rate closer to our current mill levy, but yet more than what we have been doing in the past. We commissioners instructed county staff to develop a plan to build a new EMS headquarters and a new public health department building. Voters passed a quarter-cent sales tax for the purpose of buildings and properties tax stabilization. County staff did what we asked. By tightening spending and providing greater oversight, staff was able to reallocate savings to that project and began setting money aside for construction of the new facility. Due to that process, along with two and a half years of sales tax revenue, the county is now in a position to be able to move that project forward without extra time, effort, cost of issuing bonds. The LEC is now going through the assessment to determine the best approach to address the more than 20 years of deferred maintenance. And certainly, based on the estimates for that project, no matter the final result, bonding in the future will have to be a source of funding for that major project. In my opinion, and just my opinion, far too much focus is being given to the current mill levy, and not nearly enough attention is being given to mandated, desired, and necessary services for our county's residents. Our focus hasn't been too much about today, rather than on recognition about the position in which we have placed and will even more so be placing future county commission board members. If you recall, this is not the first year I've explained, I've expressed this concern in ma- If you recall, this is not the first year I've explained, uh, I've expressed this concern. As a matter of fact, I went back to my notes. And for sure, in nineteen, in two thousand nineteen, I expressed similar concerns. We have been, we have rightfully focused on employees with regard to compensation and benefits in order to attract and retain high-quality people to serve those who we represent. However, I believe the past few budgets began digging a hole from which we must begin climbing. While the current twenty-five proposed budget, the forty-six mills, will in fact dig a much deeper hole in some respects. Permit me to provide at least one example. The majority of constituent calls that I get, and I believe each of you gets, uh, fellow commissioners, is about our roads, one of our mandated services. We have been told to properly maintain the county's two hundred and thirty-plus miles of roads. We must include twenty-three miles within each annual budget. Staff's initial budget, which was forty-nine mills, included only five miles because of guidance from us about a stable mill levy. However, based on direction from board members during the recent session, work session, staff has decreased this to one mile in twenty-twenty-five to achieve that forty-six mill levy rate. My question is, how do we address matters such as those expressed directly to Robert and me by a county resident during a recent event if public works budget is reduced so significantly? The comment made to us was, on a section of county road, quote, "Someone is going to die on that section of road, and I really hope it's not me," end quote. There are other examples with regard to the county's infrastructure, such as law enforcement center and EMS, that apply to my digging a deeper hole analogy, but I will refrain from sharing more examples at this time. Even at forty-nine mills, which is less than the twenty-three mill levy rate of forty, well, forty-nine almost flat, is less than the twenty-three, uh, mill levy rate of forty-nine-nine. We are well under the fifty-eight mills projected to be appropriate for successful county, annual county operations and ongoing property maintenance. Within our board's stated goals and priorities, together, we as a board identified for county staff a number of infrastructure concerns needing to be addressed. If I'm not mistaken, these and other projects discussed with staff during the last couple of years would total approximately one hundred million dollars. Thus, the primary reason we must continue to maintain and increase cash reserves, which has become the practice during the last four or five years. Without appropriate cash reserves, county property taxpayers will experience wildly fluctuating mill levy adjustments year over year when the need for county services, which includes people and infrastructure, continues to exist and at least in the foreseeable future, will continue to rise in cost. Cash reserves, to borrow a term from capers actuaries, quote, "smooth," end quote, the annual financial obligations year over year and make a more steady mill, uh, levy rate achievable. If I'm not mistaken, the current proposed budget of forty-six point eight six six mills will, for example, put public works in a position of having a twenty-five budget, twenty-twenty-five budget, that is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than twenty-twenty-four, at a time when we deem to do more road maintenance and repair. In my opinion, this is unacceptable when it reduces responsible road maintenance for twenty-three miles per year to one mile per year. In addition, neck, in August, uh, or on August fifth, we're gonna be asked again by KDOT to add another five miles to our total road maintenance program. Returning briefly to my thoughts about needs and wants, I ask you to consider this fact. We are committing several mills to our want of county economic development in terms of tax incentives at a cost of approximately three mills per year and directly from our annual budget at approximate cost of a one, of one-half a mill per year. At the same time, we plan to reduce budgets for needed and mandated services for county operations. Personally, I disagree with this budgeting approach. Therefore, I respectfully ask that we reconsider the drastic reductions referenced from the work session and restore public funds to, restore funds to public works and EMS, two of our mandated services. Another thing to consider is that we are far behind in maintaining several of our facilities, and some of this concern is caused because we are down three maintenance workers from a few years ago. Like it or not, the county is in the landlord business. If these properties were owned by us individually, would we not do a better job of maintaining them for our tenants? In conclusion, I believe we are too focused on the short term, which is reduction of the mill levy, that we might be losing focus or sight of the potential long-term negative impact we are making with regard to county operations and maintenance, as well as future property tax stability for our county taxpayers. I want to thank you, each and every one of you commissioners, for considering these thoughts and for the time that you allowed me for the comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Where do I start? I don't think we've been shortsighted. We've tried to build our cash reserves up where the auditors recommend. And if I think if I pull those papers out, I can show you the graphs and then where our cash reserves are, where we need them. We build those up so they, that we don't have big fluctuations in mill levies. And that's, you know, I, I've, I would all but do anything but just leave the mill levy flat. Granted, we did have a valuation increase in a lot of properties. Some were in the TIF area, which we don't benefit from, other than the valuation goes up in that area. But, uh, we do get sales tax off of those areas, which makes, that's one big, big plus and why we're able to build a new EMS and county health building without using prop, a lot of property tax to do it. Now, we've got another project across the street, which will probably have to be taken to the voters, let them decide for sure on that one. But, um, I don't, I don't believe we're trying to be shortsighted in, in cutting departments. We appreciate all the work they've gone to, to, to give us these type of budgets that let us look down the road. My thoughts are that we just need to stay, keep the mill levy flat, you know, and that'll take, we'll get more money this year because our evaluations have gone up a little bit, not much.
Mr. Dries.
The issue I, I, you know, has been brought up that, uh, we are increasing the wages, I believe, another five percent this year. Is that not correct, Mr. Administrator? He's had third year in a row or second, third? Second year, okay. That is helpful, but, uh, you know, we have a lot of these opening positions that, uh, we're accused of taking away from. My issue with that is if you have a want, need list of six positions, we have to budget for those six positions, which can amount to quite a little bit of money. Say round numbers, a hundred thousand a position. If those positions are not filled, the next year, when those positions come back, you're asking for another round of budgets for those same numbers. And I guess that's my issue, is if you can't fill the five positions, you're asking for six positions, you shouldn't be asking for ten. Why budget for ten if you can't fill the five? And that's not, that's just a round number. I realize some departments are only asking for one or two, and I have no problem with keeping one or two, three positions for departments that are needed. It's the additional want of six or seven positions when you really can only fill two or three. That's, I think that's a dramatic, dramatic effect on our budgets. HR, human, human resources, uh, employee benefits, huge part of our budget goes up tremendously each year. And, uh, to Commissioner Pisney's point, uh, roads, roads are, can, you know, I can't argue with that position on roads whatsoever. There's a lot of thought goes into this, and it's not just whacking everybody because we feel like whacking it. We do get a lot of, uh, comments on our taxes. And even if we do ra, leave our mill levy flat, your taxes are gonna go up because your appraisals went up. So that's just the nature of that beast. I could ramble on for a little bit longer, but I'll let Commissioner Jones take over.
Sir.
I'll echo a, a number of the things that Commissioner Dries brings up about staffing and unfilled positions and budgeting money that, uh, e- every year, we go through this, uh, looking at, at positions that are desired but can't be filled, and we, we appropriate money for those positions, then we're asked to, to appropriate more money for more, uh, unfilled positions. And that is where I, I kinda have difficulty, um, accepting the, the more for, for unfilled positions that, um, have historically been there. I'm thinking of larger departments, uh, sheriff's office comes to mind, uh, county attorney's office a bit that way, but, Skyler and EMS has, has a need for more people, but he can't get them hired. Same thing with, with Susan and attorneys. She, she illustrates a need but having difficulty finding the, the people. All of that said, um, I maintain that our mill levy, uh, of forty-nine point three oh nine, I think, is the magic number where we were. That exceeds revenue neutral. But I would be willing to consider the forty-nine three oh nine mill and, uh, and go through the, uh, hearing on revenue neutral, uh, being exceeded. That's my po, position.
If I may, then I'll give you-
Well, just a point of clarification to what Dave said, and then I certainly am not trying to interrupt your thoughts. But he said forty-seven point three oh nine, or forty-nine point three oh nine, and the, uh, last year's budget was forty-seven point three oh nine.
I'm sorry. I missed smoke. Thank you.
So you're talking to forty-seven point three oh nine?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Pisney, I think you get an opportunity to respond, and then I'll make some remarks, and then I'll invite input from the administrator. Sir, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, uh, not, not to the comments that I have, but I do have one specific line item that I'd like to make a suggestion about.
Go right ahead.
What, no matter what the mill levy ends up being.
Now's the time, because we have to set the not to exceed rate today.
Well, my, my one specific line item is, uh, that this would not, if, if it's, can be done, as I suspect it can, would not affect the budget amount. And that is, we have, uh, not, uh, put any money into the twenty-five budget for the showcases or any thing, uh, that supports the Garden City Community College proposal, uh, for workforce. And I know that there's resistance to the Garden City Community College, uh, proposal, and I, and I respect that and understand that. But my thought is not to, in order not to affect the budget, we've allocated three hundred thousand to economic development that we, as a board, specifically indicate that fifty thousand of that three hundred thousand be used for workforce efforts. And whether that fifty thousand of that, uh, that I'm referencing is, all goes to the showcases, as we've done this past year. So be it. Or if it's split, twenty-five thousand to showcases, twenty-five thousand to equipment or things of that nature at the community college to encourage, uh, workforce. We've said trying to encourage workforce, trying to help people stay here is an effort of ours, uh, as a board. And so not to increase budget by fifty thousand, but to specifically direct that fifty thousand of our economic development money, uh, go to one or both of those sources. That's my only other comment, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good discussion for a budget hearing. But today is, with the foresight of when we get to budget, we can have more particularized line item discussions. Today is what should be our not to exceed rate and give notice to the clerk. That's the work that we have to do today. And, uh, Mr. Administrator, you deal with the five electeds and the other department heads. You recommended a forty-nine mill levy. At least the chairman and the vice chairman have voiced an opinion to keep the mill levy at forty-seven point three. I don't know where Commissioner Dries is at. I think that's what Commissioner Jones was trying to say. What is the administrator's recommendation with regard to the not to exceed rate for today's hearing?
Commissioners, I'm gonna throw it back on you. You make the determination in terms of what level you want to fund operations of the county. In all, if we would have presented a, um, all the requests, the request would have been somewhere around fifty-eight mills. Everybody in this room realizes that's wasn't going to happen. But it was done in an effort to indicate to you what those needs are as it relates to all the departments and their requests. If, if the commission, where we're at today is based on the results of discussions with the commission in the work session, which is just under that, um, just under forty-six nine. My suggestion is if you're wanting to put money back into that discussion, you need to do it in a strategic manner. Once again, what is it that you're wanting to achieve? What's important to you? I think each one of the departments have had, uh, opportunity to express to you what it takes for the most part to operate. And also what it takes to plan for the future of it. So.
Good tennis volley. I served one, a high lob, and you hit a fastball back at us. The-
You're welcome.
Concern that I have is, we're in a time in Fannie County where we have great economic growth. But that economic growth is not useful tax dollars to this county government. Our tax base went down five hundred thousand dollars. And I hope everybody in the room and everybody listening can take that in. Our amount of money available to us next year, twenty-twenty-five, the valuation is down, and then, and you ought to hear homeowners squeal about that. Everyone in here pays their taxes. And your taxes are going up. How could the total amount of valuation go down? Well, we had a thirteen million dollar loss in oil and gas valuation. And, and yes, we had total growth in the county, but the TIF and RHID numbers outpaced, uh, the loss in oil and gas. And thus, the total tax base available for the county went down five hundred thousand dollars. That equates to fifty thousand dollars in less revenue. Or more. And we don't get all of it, as the clerk reminds me every time. Just because the valuation is there doesn't mean that the county gets all of the apple. But yet, we are seen as the public entity or government entity that receives those funds because where do you pay your taxes? Right down in the treasurer's office, and she's more than willing to listen to you tell her about how it's not fair that your taxes went up. What I'm suggesting to everyone in the room and to all those listening online is that today's job is to set the not to exceed rate, which does limit our- today's job is to set the not to exceed rate, which does limit our ability to raise additional revenue in the twenty-twenty-five budget cycle. This is not the budget hearing. This is the hearing to decide what should be the not to exceed rate. And, uh, for me, uh, you can set the not to exceed rate at whatever you want to, because when we get to the budget hearings, is where the tire meets the pavement. That's where we have to decide. Today is not a have-to-decide deal. We're not putting positions back in a budget, we're not increasing anything today. All we're doing is giving a notice to the clerk, as required by our legislature, so that we can have a hearing, so that we can exceed last year's net revenue rate according to some compilation of figures from the State Department, and we spend millions and millions of dollars doing this net revenue neutral stuff that gets us nowhere. In other words, we have to have a duplicative hearing on the issue of budget. It's wasteful, it's time-consuming, and I don't like it. What I do like is to see the faces of everyone here who does the work in the county, that they are concerned that they are not being listened to, and that is not the case. I know of no one occupying the five chairs up here who hasn't heard you. We've tried to be responsive, responsive in a way that is critical. You cannot run the county attorney through, all the way down to the bottom last letter in the alphabet, of our county entities without tax dollars. We know that, you do too. What we have to do is provide the level of stability to our budget process that is fair to the people that actually pay the taxes. And it has to be fair to the people that provide the services. And that balance is left in these five chairs, and it's not an easy position to be in. Having said that, today's purpose is to determine the not to exceed rate for notice to the clerk under the net revenue neutral statute. It is not to make any determinations of where we, what we should do with budget positions, economic development, roads, or any of the other six items that we have to do, or any of our outside agencies that receive funding from your tax dollars. Today is to simply to determine not to exceed rate. With those comments, I would entertain any motion of the commission of what they not to exceed rate and notice should be to the clerk under this net revenue statute. That's the work that needs to be done today.
And, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, part of, uh, in your terms, is part of my rebuttal, I don't know that it's rebuttal, but in my remarks, uh, the Administrator said the fifty-eight mills was if we were to fund the, uh, county appropriately. I, I don't think there's any appetite for being in that area. As a matter of fact, as I look back, uh, for twenty-twenty-three, I recall that discussion is, let's keep this under fifty mills, and we just barely did that in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, my appetite is for the forty-nine point oh one six that we were presented, because I think that's a budget that's in the middle, if you will, uh, that we could operate the county, but we're still gonna be in the hole, so to speak, uh, on some of the things that we've talked about. The forty-six or even the forty-seven from last year, to me, is, uh, not letting us get ahead on maintenance and, and those kind of things. And I, I appreciate what you've said, and you're absolutely correct. Uh, my comment might have been out of order on, uh, the fifty thousand, because that is for the budget hearing. However, that rate needs to include things that we think we might want to have back in the budget, uh, at that budget hearing. So, uh, it is kind of a twofold thing when we're setting this not to exceed rate. Uh, my appetite is for the forty-nine mills.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
If we're gonna exceed that rate, which sounds like we will, the revenue neutral rate, I would agree with Commissioner Pishney that forty-nine point oh one six is the original presented budget would be a, a number to start at.
Commissioner Jones?
Is that a motion?
No, that was a comment.
Make that a motion, and I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Jones?
Well, if we're just setting a rate, arbitrary rate, not to exceed-
Not to exceed.
Basically, um, you know, forty-nine mills is, it would be fine, but, um, that doesn't mean we're gonna be at forty-nine mills.
Having heard that, I will move that we put the not to exceed revenue neutral rate at forty-nine point zero one six.
Why don't you round it up and make it forty-nine mills?
Well, the only, the only reason I would second his motion is because that's what was presented to us, and so I would second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to set the not to exceed, uh, net revenue rate at forty-nine point zero one six mills. Further discussion? I have plenty of discussion. Our taxpayers want this mill levy to stay the same. They do not want an increase in the mill levy. Our other taxing entities are going to increase mill levies. They have to. The county does not. And, uh, it, it seems inappropriate to me to get an expectation that we're going to exceed forty-seven point three when there's not a desire to do that in the end. And I understand the motion, and as is seconded, to set the not to exceed rate at forty-nine point zero one six, but I don't want anybody to think that that's where the budget's gonna end. This just provides the county with a lot of flexibility, should the taxpayers voice their opinion that they want their taxes raised.
Mr. Chairman, that is the intent of the motion. I do not expect it to be forty-nine, but that gives us some leeway.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, in our discussion on the motion, I would add, I encourage people to come to the hearings. We have one to zero most of the time on annual hearings, uh, whether it be budget or revenue neutral, and when they come, I would ask that they not only bring their concern about their taxes, but they bring with them some possible solutions, some ideas that would help us understand how do we address that then.
Any further discussion on the pending motion before the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. The net revenue neutral not to exceed rate is forty-nine point zero one six. Do you have a notice for me to sign? Oh, would you make a motion for me to sign the notice to the clerk?
Yeah, I... I think, can we not do both of them on September third?
Cool.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we set our budget hearing and our not to ex, our, our revenue neutral rate hearing, uh, both for, uh, September third at nine AM, and I would also include in that motion that you, uh, uh, provide, uh, sign whatever documentation is needed and provide that to the clerk.
Second.
Been seconded to set the hearing for September third at nine AM. You unauthorized the chair to sign. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Yes, sir. We are going to take a break and reconvene at ten fifteen, and we will then take up, uh, Board Governance, Staff Reports, and the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
Choice either, but it appears.
Thank you, everyone. Back on to our agenda. We are ready for a report from the clerk regarding board governance.
Just within the upcoming meetings and events, I did add the man listening tour, which is taking place tomorrow from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. at St. Catherine Hospital. Other than that, we've got the candidate forums coming up this week on Tuesday and Thursday evening, both at six o'clock. Both of them will be held in this room, and they will be broadcast live online as well. And then next Monday, early voting in person will begin here in this building.
All right. Anything else for the calendar? Hearing none, then we will move on.
Let's see, we have a ribbon cutting tomorrow. You want to talk about calendar events or something?
Is that the one that Lisa?
Kansas Food Bank.
Yeah, the Kansas Food Bank. I apologize. I didn't have any information on that other than what she texted me, so.
At 10 o'clock, which would be before we have to be at Representative Mann's.
Yeah, right before Representative Mann's.
All right. Next on our agenda is our monthly incident report from the fire chief. Standing in for the chief, we have.
Good morning, Commissioners. Name's Kenny Smith with the Garden City Fire Department, Training Officer. This report is for the month of June. As you can see, 42 calls in total for the month of June, with the vast majority of them being rescue slash EMS assists in any capacity. Outside of that, if you'll go to the last one, just to show the number of calls within your prospective townships, with Garden City Township having, again, the vast majority of it just because of the populace. That's really all I have. I do have information. I know it's June. This is June, but I do have information on July stuff if you want to know.
Of concern to the commission is, do we have any fireworks problems?
For the dates of the first through the fifth, we had zero fires and zero injuries that were related to fireworks. We did have a report from Chief Frizzell that there was a grass fire in Holcombe, but it was not called in or paged out. Maybe they came across it on their patrolling, so. But that is the only information that I had.
Any questions for fire chief?
In respect, sorry, in respect to the smoke that is in the area, that is from off of Annie Shear Trinity Feedyards. They have a hay bale fire, and it's going to be a while before it goes out, just so you guys know, so.
I told Larry when I came into town this morning, it smelled, it looked like fog at first, it smelled like smoke, and I said, I think it's hay bales.
Yeah, it's, it's a, the vast majority of their hay bales are up in flames right now, so it's not, not a good picture for them right now.
Those fires, you just let them go in case you can't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. You don't have enough water to put on them, so.
Keep everything else around it from burning.
Yep.
Anything else for the fire chief? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Development?
Morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I want to support what Lana was saying earlier too, with seeing those interests in the industrial and residential development. We're seeing it over here as well. There's been a few different development meetings that have been scheduled, two that we attended last week, and there's one possibly going to be at before the end of the year, or month, not year. So to go into the updates for the current developments, the only update I have for you today is that we did receive the compaction tests for the roads in Randall Estates, so we'll be taking a look at that. And then if everything looks good, then they can move on to the next step.
All right, very good. And we're selling some lots in Randall Estates?
There's a few lots that have already been sold in Randall Estates, yes.
Now, I was just going to follow that. And Country Acres, have they, have they sold lots? Have they started projects yet?
They've sold lots, and they have one house that's currently being built, and the other one, they're waiting on a plot to be finished.
I just hadn't been by there for a while, so.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mackenzie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator's report, sir?
All right, just a couple of updates on projects. You've got Justice Planners last week presented to the committee a draft report, and that's been forwarded to everybody as well. On the, on the fairgrounds project for the electrical service and wiring, that project should be completed by the end of this week. And recall that that needed to be done by the end of the month, so we're, we're just a little ahead of schedule, so that's a good thing. We do have, of course, the majority of the time been spent on budget prep and so forth. And that's really about it. I believe update on the court, on the courthouse elevator, and I've got Kyle in here, but I think they are planning on being in there potentially this week. Okay. And there's some work being done to the library, air conditioning as well. Okay.
All right. Any other questions for the administrator on the report? We'll go to department monthly reports. Do you have anything in particular?
No, sir. Nothing more than added.
County councillor report?
Largely, the last couple of weeks have seen some, the, with the holiday and other matters, the NDS discussions have been largest on the forefront of things that I've been working on. There has still been some movement on the tax sale. I believe that there's at least been some contact, and hopefully a little bit more being paid. Should be as soon as I can wrap up these other matters, should be ready to go on getting that tax sale filed as far as that part goes. We do have an executive session on our agenda for today. It's in order after the commissioner reports, but to talk about some matters for an attorney-client privilege regarding contract negotiations.
All right. Any questions for anybody for staff reports? We'll go right left to right. Commissioner Jones?
I have no, no meetings to report, Mr. Chairman, other than phone calls back and forth with the library, and they finally closed it due to elevated temperatures and no air conditioning. So he was closed Friday and closed through the weekend, and are they back running this morning? Kyle?
I don't believe they're running, but whoever's is there right now, I'm looking at it to figure out the problem.
Okay. Kyle's working on it, so it's in good hands.
Very good. Commissioner Driz?
Two things. Fair Board was last Wednesday night. The fair is just around the corner, folks. Starts this Saturday with a concert with Josh Abbott, and then the official fair starts Monday. These folks have put a lot of effort in it. We're going to have a concert. We're going to have a tractor pull. We're going to have a rodeo. We've got several entertainers lined up. It should be a great event for the community all week long, especially the two weekends, so. And then followed up, we had, as administrator said, we had the LEC presentation on what we, what, what size and all the facts and figures on that's involved with that, some 120 or 30 slides, if I recall quite a bit. So if you guys, each of you should receive that presentation, and it'll take you a while to go through it. Other than that, it was a good meeting, quite well attended, so we're, they're going to put together where we go from here, and get back with us in a few weeks.
Commissioner Pesney?
As far as meetings attended, the extension district met or sat in on their meeting last week, and the main takeaway from that board is, that affects us here in Fannie County, is they're trying to put, based on K-State's guidance, MOUs together with the fair boards in Scott and Fannie County, and they're hoping to have that done by this fall. That just simply would outline what responsibilities are, are for each entity, extension, and for each and fair and so forth. Was in on the LEC meeting that's been referenced a couple of times, was asked to join in on a call with KDOT with regard to 83 and, and some of the entrances along that five mile stretch that they plan to vacate. And then Friday evening was a fun time to help celebrate Mark Hines' retirement from SDSI, and he's brought a lot to that organization, and we're going, I told him we're going to miss seeing him here doing presentations, but I said, it also gives you more time to study those board packets for school boards, so they're going to expect you to be the expert. So we'll see how much more impact he has there on the school board. Oh, and then lastly, and got to see Earl and Sue McGinn. He hadn't been here for 10 years, and Earl was there at SDSI for, I don't remember how many years, as their CFO, and so it was good to see a former Garden City in this as well.
Wonderful. Commissioner Jones?
No official meetings. I spent my time in the land of enchantment. So I missed, I missed the fireworks, which breaks my heart. But it, I do appreciate the, the moisture and everything that Commissioner Driz dialed up for me, but I wish you a little less wind next time. Other than that.
I'll do my best.
Yeah, nothing official.
All right. Compass does not meet in June, so I do not have a meetings report. We are working on some exciting things in our community. We'll have more of that to follow. We will continue to work on developing cooperation between the city and the county at all levels of government to make government more efficient for the people. And with that, I would encourage people to be involved in the opportunity to meet your congressman, and also the opportunity to, as discussed today throughout today's hearing with regard to budget, to let us hear from you. With that, yes, sir?
Just one thing, your comment just triggered. Dwayne and I, and Robert and Jenny, we heard, each of us heard this, but Justice Planners was very complimentary about all the stakeholders that they interviewed, and one of the things that's high on the, on the ladder of items to address with the LEC is the mental health issue. So they, that is a piece that's not necessarily received as much attention in previous buildings, but certainly will receive attention in new facility.
Right, and then once again, that candidate forum is tomorrow?
Tomorrow night.
Six o'clock?
For the county commission. Sheriff is on Thursday.
Okay. Calendar. Hope folks will, if they cannot attend, at least watch and participate by Zoom. Is that correct?
No, it'll be broadcast live on Facebook.
All right, it will be broadcast then?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, county councilors, there's need for an executive session. Who should be attending, and for what length of time?
Probably the administrator, the assistant administrator, and myself for this one. I can't imagine it's going to be too long, so probably 10 minutes.
All right. Question?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for attorney-client privilege reasons, and that we include the administrator, assistant administrator, and county councillor as well as board members for a time of 10 minutes.
Give her a second.
Second.
Give the second to go into executive session for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene at 12, or 10:42, 10:43. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will the executive? Opposed? Will the executive?